Good evening, I would like to call the August 14th, 2012 Longmont City Council Meeting to Order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call, Valerie?
Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Samori.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
And Witt.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
All right, let's stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their lists, on, names on this list, will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or at final call, public invited to be heard, on any item at the end of the meeting. Let's see, do we have any, no minutes to approve?
No minutes, but we do have some agenda revisions and submissions. You received two documents via email to supplement your packet. One was for item 9D, it was a revised intergovernmental agreement with Boulder County for the conduct of the election. And item 9F, you received a revised final aviation grant agreement for the funding of the extension of the taxiway advance grant. And both of those were on our website as well.
All right, thank you. Is there a report from the city manager?
Mayor Council, no comments.
All right, the first person on the list, public invited to be heard, is Strider Benston.
The big one? Yeah, all right. Strider Benston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. Well, I did have some notes, but having lost them, I shall dispense with that. I, I try to restrain myself from talking about national matters, because local ones, or global ones, or spiritual ones, I think are often the most crucial to be addressed. And in that realm, on the natural side, we have 62 major wildfires going on right now. About a million acres is burning. And we already dealt with half a million acres earlier this summer. It looks like the second season is coming. And fifty-seven days of ninety-plus already. Something is happening, as everyone is aware by their senses. I do want to just maybe preempt myself, so that I won't spill into it in the future, but with the new vice presidential nominee, Ryan of Wisconsin, I need to point out a couple of things. This person who has basically worshipped Ayn Rand all of his life, until the last two years, when he decided to move to national office, and now he's distancing himself from himself. The person he has always honored is the progenitor of the worship of greed, and also was a hardcore adulteress, and also hardcore atheist. So I find it interesting that hardcore Christians regard her as their number-one guide in the world. But that's what we're dealing with. Mr. Ryan himself, although he had lots of money growing up, when his father died, he took social security from the government. Well, when my parents died, and I was poverty-stricken, I did not have access to that. I find it interesting. And his hometown of Janesville, Wisconsin, I know Janesville pretty well, they lost 11,000 jobs with the export of the auto industry. Six hundred and fifty in one plant, five hundred in another, five thousand at the GM plant, et cetera. Well, the stimulus money came, and a lot of these workers were able to retrain to work their way into other industries, so the town didn't completely collapse, like perhaps Flint, Michigan, and others did. So let's be aware of where people are really coming from, when they tell us things that they want us to believe, because they themselves may not. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Lannan? Please come down and state your name and address, please.
Dale Lannan, 1018 Ponderosa Circle. I'd like to speak to a coming crisis, a food crisis, and a world crisis of unimaginable proportion. The Arctic is going to lose its ice cover at sea within a decade, as projected by volume decreases for 2015. It's going to unleash a methane release. Methane, at ten years out, is over a hundred times the strength of carbon dioxide. The amounts in just the east Siberian Arctic shelf, which is very shallow, very huge, like six thousand, huge, not under square kilometers, and only several hundred feet deep. A huge cyclone just occurred in the Arctic, which was as large as the Arctic Sea, and it had the mixing effect to depth of 500 feet. Now, this brought warmth to the sediments below, to melt the class rates. And the volumes of these class rates in the methane that are controlled is something to the order of 1.7 times 10 to the eighteenth metric tons. And it has a strength of a greenhouse coefficient compared to carbon dioxide, capable of putting the world really over the top in very, very, very short order. I would suggest that our city make note of everything we do, whether resurfacing roads, it takes oil. When we buy fuel, we buy electricity, where it comes from, its carbon footprint. Also, the things that we can do here to allow people to grow food in their, on their own backyard, and things like this. This is not playthings. The chickens and stuff, that, that might come up again, I might bring it up here. But it's not plaything anymore. It's going to come to crisis in pronto, and we need to take action as a city. We need to protect our people and act as a, as really a bellwether organization to lead other, other kinds, others, other cities as well. Our people are going to be in, in, in big trouble. If we could promote the use of bicycles every chance we get, and really create heroes among us, who try to keep the right-ofways, and the things that are for building products and things like that, that lessen the, the effects of global warming. This would be huge and a major step towards leading, and that's what we need to do. Thanks.
Thank you, Dale. Do we have anybody else on public invited to be heard?
Mayor, the first item on second reading public hearings is ordinance 2012-50, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Parker annexation, which is generally located south of Third Avenue, and west of Sunset Golf Course, and zoning the property E2, and Brian Schumacher has a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Brian Schumacher with the Economic Development Department. As you may recall, the second reading of this annexation and the public hearing was held on July 24th. And at that time, council deferred taking action on the ordinance until tonight's meeting, to allow time to update the legal description. So the legal description has been revised to reflect the vacation of a small portion of right-ofway by Boulder County in 1997 as a result of a court order. And this is reflected in the revised ordinance that's in your packet. The total area, the effective change for the legal description is only about 700 square feet, or about one-sixtieth of an acre. The concept plan has also been updated to show the approximate location of the house at 1901 Third Avenue, or portions of the Third Avenue and alley right-ofway were vacated in 97 to account for the house encroachment. The annexation agreement has also been updated to reflect the revised legal description and concept plan exhibits, so they're concurrent with the ordinance. If council wants to move forward with this, you should move to substitute the revised ordinance, oh, 2012-50, prior to taking final action on this item. Mr. Parker is available, if you have questions for him, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have this evening. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions from council members? I'll open a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion? Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, I would move to substitute the, the language with the language that has been presented.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, I would move to, I would move ordinance 2012-50.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, the next item is the Twin Peaks Metropolitan District. You have two items under that. First is the Twin Peaks Metropolitan District Public Hearing, and second is Resolution 2012-60, which is a resolution approving the service plan for the Metropolitan District. Jim Golden will make a short presentation.
Mayor Coombs, member of council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. In May of this year, the council adopted an ordinance which allows for a skeletal service plan to be submitted for the formation of a Title 32 special district. This opportunity allows for a developer to submit, submit a plan with only the basic information necessary to create the special district. Typically, we, a service plan application must include a capital plan that details the type of capital facilities and cost of proposed facilities. A financial plan that will detail the proposed sources of revenue and projected district expenses, total amount of debt issuance, and a number of other exhibits. Under the skeletal service plan, the proposed district is forbidden from undertaking any activity except minimal administrative activities required by state law to maintain the district as a lawfully existing political subdivision of the state. District would not be able to levy any taxes, impose any fees, construct any public improvements, or incur any debt until an amendment to the service plan is approved. That amendment would need to include all the financial information and details of the capital facilities required under the original special district ordinance. So in late June, staff did receive a skeletal service plan for the proposed Twin Peaks Metropolitan District, which is intended for the proposed redevelopment of the Twin Peaks Mall. We reviewed and analyzed that skeletal service plan with the city staff, the bond council for the city, and its financial advisor. Does meet the requirements of the new sections of the special district ordinance. We analyzed that and presented it to the council on July 24th. At that time, the council directed us to schedule a public hearing for consideration of the metro district application. And also along with that, we do have that resolution tonight to approve the service plan. So tonight, along with myself, we do have the finance, city's financial advisor, Jim Meneer here, as well as the applicant, and the applicant's legal counsel also here. We can try to answer any questions. We can try to answer any questions you have about this matter.
Are there any questions from council members? Seeing none, I will open a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak on this item at this time? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Councilmember Bagley?
I move that we pass ordinance R-2012-60. Resolution 2012-60.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
The next portion of your agenda is the consent agenda. First item is ordinance 2012-55, a bill for an ordinance extending the period during which the Longmont Downtown Development Authority may allocate and collect in the Downtown Development Authority tax increment fund a portion of property taxes. The public hearing and second reading is scheduled for August 28. Item 9B is ordinance 2012-56, a bill for an ordinance approving a gas franchise with public service company in Colorado by amending Chapter 6.60 of the Longmont Municipal Code, subject to approval by the registered electors of the City of Longmont. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for August 28, 2012. Item 9C is Resolution 2012-61, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for four stewardship activities at Button Rock Preserve. Item 9D is Resolution 2012-62, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement, excuse me, by and between the City of Longmont and the Boulder County Clerk and Recorder for the Conduct and Administration of the 2012 General Election to be held November 6, 2012. Item 9E is Resolution 2012-63, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Longmont and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Weld and the Weld County Clerk and Recorder for Conduct of the November 6, 2012 General Election. And item 9F is Resolution 2012-64, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the United States of America for grant funding for the extension of a taxiway at Benspring Municipal Airport. Staff does not need to pull any items.
I think before we get started, I would like to be upfront and disclose that I am a member of a business and also a property owner in the LDDA, but I'm not going to recuse myself from item 9A because, number one, I don't think, you know, alls we're doing is we're voting to extend the timeline of the district, so it doesn't then affect my taxes, or it doesn't specify how those taxes are going to be paid, and I can be maintained in partiality. So I just wanted to get that out front publicly.
Councilmember Samori?
I will need to request to remove item A from the consent agenda because I have two conflicts with it. One is I also own property in downtown, and second, I'm a voting member of the DDA. So I would need to recuse myself from voting on this.
I'd like to move the consent agenda minus item A.
All right, let's vote.
Actually, Mayor, a quick comment. Usually when someone recuses themselves, they get up and leave the room. Is that, he can vote on this, but just, okay, fine.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, the member has to remove themselves if they have a conflict on the item that they're going to vote on, not the rest of the items that we just voted on. Just for clarification.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move ordinance 2012-55.
All right, let's vote. And that passes six to zero with councilmember Samori reclusing himself. Yeah. Next is the final call. Public invited to be heard. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward and talk at this time?
Hello, city councilman, mayor and everything. My name is Michael Collier. I live at 420 North Parkside Drive in Longmont, and I hope that when you announce new businesses tonight or new things in Longmont, you'll mention the firing range. I think it's going to have a grand opening this Saturday, I think. I'm not sure. But I took the class to use it, and I think it might be one of the only firing ranges that the public could use on Friday nights, Saturdays and Sundays in the country, I think. It's remarkable that you trust the citizens enough, the ones that are low-abiding, to carry firearms and maybe carry them concealed, then you give them a safe place to use them and train young people on how to, you know, hunting safety and also allow, let's say, victims of violence, for instance, to train themselves so they can defend themselves or so that they can feel that they can defend themselves. You really have a very high regard for the citizens of Longmont, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else like to come forward and speak?
Yeah. Strider Benston, 951 Seventeenth Avenue, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to clarify a numbers thing. I appreciate Dale's research and insight, but the numbers got out of hand. It was not 10 to the 18th, it was 10 to the 12th. So instead of a quintillion tons, it's a trillion tons, which is still possibly extinctionary in its danger. And this is merely the continental shelf off the Arctic. When you add all the other continents, which also have shelves with methane pools and methane hydrate, which one or two degree temperature rise of the ocean could release all of that, you multiply this number by at least a factor of another 10 and maybe as much as 100. So the danger is as serious as Dale mentioned, just the numbers are not quite as big. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. Okay, it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, as I always do, would like to mention the business of the week. I also want to make sure that those businesses out there understand that in order for me to mention the business of the week, it has to be a member of the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce. Several people have asked to be included, and unless you're a member of the chamber, someone else will have to do it. I have a serious one tonight. I know there are a lot of people who are out of work, and there are some jobs to be had, and one can find those jobs at SOS Employment Group. They're located at 829 Main Street, Number 1. They have lots of jobs available, so if you are looking for a job, check out SOS Employment Group.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to remind residents that election ward boundary changes for 2012. You have an option to go onto the city website and select options A, B, C, or D for the new reapportionment of city wards. So it's an online survey, or you can come down and, I guess, there's also locations at the library, civic center, senior center, Longmont Rec Center, and the St. Crane Memorial Building that you can actually write down comments and pick which ward map that you would like. Just a reminder. That goes on for Valerie. How long?
At least through August and probably that portion of September.
Okay. So you just have plenty of time. Just encourage people to go out and do that.
Councilmember Levison?
Yes. I hate to mention this, but summer vacation is almost over for St. Crane Valley School District students back to school, which means there will be, we've all gotten used to being able to get around town very speedily in the morning because there's less traffic. But beginning Thursday and Friday, Thursday when a portion of students begin, and then Friday when the whole district begins, there will be plenty more traffic. And so I would ask everybody to just bear in mind that the students will be back, and we're trying to encourage people to walk to school, to bike to school, to skateboard to school. So keep an eye out for your students, your neighbor kids, and the rest of us trying to get back and forth with those non-automobile modes of transportation. And I also hope that everybody gets a good start to the school year. And I had actually one other question. Why is Union Reservoir Swimming Beach not open on weekdays? I had a group of students that were attempting to go swimming this afternoon, and there was a sign saying the swimming beach is only open on the weekends now. So I just thought last week of school, it would be, you know, kind of it was a cool idea to go swimming at Union Reservoir, but the hopes of teenagers were dashed.
We'll give the answer for you and let you know in terms of why.
Councilmember Witt?
I'm pretty sure councilmember Levison, it was so that their parents could get some work out of them, make them clean their rooms.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Very productive comment, Councilmember Witt. Thank you. I just have a couple, one comment and one potential can of worms. One, yeah, so we're going to lead off with a comment. I just want to say thank you, Dale Roddemaker and Nick Wolfram and the people on the chip seal. I was floored at how responsive you guys were. I see throughout the town or our city, the, you know, the flashing lights giving a couple days heads up on this area will be subject to chip seal. Alternate route advised. You've been cleaning up the gravel. Just if it goes like this, I don't think we have a problem. I thought it was awesome. So just at least one member of our city noticed, so thank you. And the other thing is, there was a, this is not, I'm raising it now. I don't want, I am not going to make a motion, nor am I asking that we debate this now. But the question came up a few weeks ago. There were some accusations made about the executive session. I know that we're currently subject to a lawsuit from the state. My question is for the city attorney, and I haven't talked to anybody on the phone, but I figured this was a good place to pose this question. At what point would it be appropriate to release those tapes so that people know that everything went okay? Mayor and councilmember Bagley, Eugene May, city attorney. So I'm not exactly which sure which.
We had some executive sessions.
Correct.
Over the last six months when we were talking about, you know, oil and gas regs, et cetera. And then there were some, there have been accusations that we did backdoor deals, et cetera. And so when would it be appropriate to say, well, we don't, I mean, we can release these now?
That would be up to council to decide. For those matters that constitute legal advice, that'd be confidential attorney-client communications, waiver of that privilege could only be done by council.
Right.
The other basis was better subject to negotiation.
Right.
That would also have to be a decision by council to release those tapes.
So my question is, with the lawsuit, would it be a problem to release the tapes at this point, or do we wait?
You know, executive sessions are meant to be confidential. I also know that the city has a policy of destroying those tapes after 90 days, so if there is a concern, we can certainly put a retainer on those, make sure that doesn't happen, if it's under consideration.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. With that, I will continue to turn. Thanks. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I did fail to mention one thing. I would like, the school board has, St. Crane Valley School Board has just passed, and they're going to the ballot for a mill levy override. So I would like to invite, you know, members of the school board to come to a city council meeting to provide us information regarding their proposal for ballot language, and then from there, a resolution either in support or not in support of the mill levy override. Having talked to several school board members, it looks like that, you know, talking for myself personally, I'd be in favor of this, but I think we, I have a feeling they'll be coming to council and asking for a resolution in support of, so it might be good to have staff invite them to, a couple of board members, Superintendent Don Hadad, to come and give us a presentation regarding what they're proposing. So that's direction. Does anybody, do you need a motion?
Yeah.
Will I move that we do that?
I'll second it. Is there any else? Okay, with that, should we vote on it?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. It's been moved and seconded.
Okay. Okay, let's vote to invite. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This, you, myself, and Councilman Samori, we were all present at the Longmont Area Economic Council, and the council also moved to, and passed a resolution saying that they were going to support the mill levy.
Right.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. I just want to mention one thing around publishing deadlines for that. Eugene's going to talk a little bit more about it, I believe, but if you invite Don to come or members of the school board to come over the next couple of weeks, it might also be nice if you really intend to go ahead and do a support resolution to give us that direction tonight as well. The reason I say that is because generally those resolutions that you take positions on, we like to print, reprint and city line in order to help your electors understand your position. Our deadline for that's going to be pretty much the first or second week of September in order to make sure it gets in the October edition. So as I said, I think Eugene's going to talk more about other ballot resolutions, but just thought I would mention that.
Councilmember Santos?
Well, there was, let's go ahead and talk about the vote. So there was.
Seven to zero was the vote on inviting the school board to give us a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would move that we direct staff to draft a resolution in support of the mill levy override by the St. Crane Valley School District, which is 3A.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I was just going to, I don't know a lot of people when you go to raising taxes, et cetera, mill levies, it can get a little controversial. However, my experience over the last eight months since I've been on council, interacting with the school district, seeing things, we're starting to see, as we're all aware, we're starting to lose all kinds of services. That's a direct result of not having the funds. And so, anyway, it's not that I'm overly enthusiastic about putting a mill levy in place, but it's, I get the impression in talking to Don Hadad that it's dire straits. And so the options, I believe, are either don't fund our schools and have uneducated children, or else cop over some more money. Sitting on the floor. That's right, Councilmember Witt. Sitting on the floor.
Councilmember Levison?
So councilmember Santos, did you have a target date by which we should do this? Are we shooting for August 28th? Because I think we should do it as quick, try to get things moving as quickly as possible.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll let staff make that determination and see if they can get the school board here, school board members and Superintendent Hadad here. And then if it's the 28th, then it's the 28th. If it's the, you know, the sooner the better. I'm sure if that's the deadline, they'll make it.
All right. Yeah. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero. All right, now, I guess the last thing is, we have on the 25th, Saturday, coffee with council, with Alex, Samori, myself, and Councilmember Levison. And this will be at the City Cafe. It's at 14. be at the City Cafe, it's at fourteen forty-seven, or excuse me, fourteen forty-two on Nelson Road, at the City Cafe from, at nine o'clock. So, hope to see y'all there. It's the twenty, it's not this Saturday, but it's a week from this Saturday, the twenty-fifth. All right, city manager, you have any additional remarks?
No comments, Mayor and council.
City attorney, any remarks?
Did you forget what it's like? I'm not on vacation anymore. Oh, I'm working.
So, mayor and council, a couple of things. One, next week's study session is going to be canceled. We had a postponement of a agenda item, and so are canceling the study session meeting. And due to that cancellation, I am requesting that we move the executive session for my performance evaluation and the oil and gas update to September fourth, so that we can all have tomorrow, next Tuesday off. No council, no nothing. Don't need to show up.
All right. I'm okay with that.
And then also, building on Mayor Protem Santos's remarks, it is ballot measure season, and once the ballot titles are set, the Fair Campaign Practices Act kicks in, and ballot titles are going to be set on August twenty-eighth for a number of items. After that, the city will be prohibited from expending public monies to advocate for or against ballot measures. The city can distribute factual summaries, including arguments pro and con, which we did for the telecom ballot measure. Council members do retain their First Amendment rights. They can express a personal opinion on any ballot measure, but may not express an opinion as a council member. And as council directed, for the school district mill levy, they are able to pass a resolution in support or opposition to ballot measures. And as we heard from Assistant City Manager Cedar, direction for resolutions, for staff prepared resolutions would be appropriate on August twenty-eighth in order to meet our publication deadlines. And so if council is interested in other resolutions, August twenty-eighth would be the right time to give that direction. And I'll probably remind you again on August twenty-eighth, when those ballot measures titles are set. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Eugene. I guess we're done. This meeting is adjourned.[1650.45]